That at the time, that at the name of Jesus, every knee should bend. Of those in heaven and on earth and under the earth, and every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of the God the Father. The word of the Lord?
Amen.
Charles Burrow, from, born fifteen thirty-eight, died fifteen eighty-four, seemed to have it all. Well born and wealthy, he was also a brilliant student who completed degrees in civil and canon law. His uncle, Pope priest? Oh, pious, thank you. Um, appointed Charles the Archbishop of Milan at the age of twenty-two. Such early honors would have turned the head of anyone but a saint like Charles, who threw himself into his work with great energy. Charles played a leading role at the Council of Trent, facilitating some of the later meetings, and oversaw the implementation of the council's reforms in his diocese. Saint Charles was one of the main inspirations for Saint John, twenty-third, who called the Second Vatican Council. John chose November fourth to be installed as Pope because it is the memorial of his beloved Saint Charles. Prayers. For those who've died, we pray. We offer, we offer our prayers this evening for the deceased members of our extended Halton Catholic system. Honey Just, the mother of Beverly Ann McGee, secondary school teacher at Bishop Reading Catholic School in Milton. Anthony Solistiniano, the father of Carl Siciliano Muscolu, occasional teacher at the Halton Catholic District School Board. But the prayers of Saint Charles and all of God's holy ones to help us, let us pray, sing. Lord, hear our prayer.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That the Church may humbly walk the path of penance and renewal in every age, we pray.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That the nations may find the way of justice and peace for all, we pray.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That all those who lead others may be filled with wisdom and restraint, we pray.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That we may be good and fulfill stewards, and fulfilled stewards of all that God has entrusted to us, we pray.
Lord, hear our prayer.
And for those who have died, we pray.
Lord, hear our prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but the rest from evil. Amen. Lord God, we praise you for the gifts you bestowed on Saint Charles with such abundance. Make us mindful of your presence always, so that all we do may become a work of love. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Wherever you are, Lord, there is mercy, there is truth. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Chloe. That was lovely. Thank you. Really lovely. My first task, which I sometimes forget, is to remind all participants that as the signage outside the door indicated, tonight's board meeting is being video and voice recorded and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Welcome you all to our board meeting tonight. It's very nice that you would come out on such a difficult night. So we will begin with asking for a motion, trustees, I need a motion please, to accept the resolution made in camera. Can I have a mover? Trustee Vienna, thank you. Trustee Marai, thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, may I ask that you report on the motion made in camera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolve that the contract of Paula A. Dawson, Director of Education and Secretary of the Board, be extended for a three-year term, beginning on September first, two thousand and fifteen, and ending on August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd also like to advise that an email from the chair will be sent out to all staff tonight to inform them of the extension of Director Dawson's contract, as well, a news release will be sent out to our media contacts tomorrow morning to advise them of the same. Thank you. We are now on number two, approval of the agenda. Trustee Rowe, trustee Michael? Oh, you're adding, okay. I'm sorry. All right, what would you like to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I add, item entitled Provincial Sex Education Questionnaire for Parent Councils?
Uh, would you like that under what category?
Wherever you'd like to put it. Yes, discussion is fine.
You don't have discussion, but we'll put one. Okay. Let's put it under information, so we don't have discussion, all right? So comment ten point six.
Thank you.
Other, um, information.
Thank you.
And all keywords.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item eight point two, request for recount, Burlington Wards one and two.
All right, so, um...
I won't be speaking to that.
Vice Chair will not be speaking or voting in that category at all, but will remain in the room as this is a public forum. Am I understanding that correctly? Yes, okay. All right. Anything else? No? All right, no presentations, no delegations. Approval of the minutes, please. Can I have a mover? Trustee La May, seconded by, trustee Rowe, any questions to the minutes? No? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Opposed? No? Okay, thank you. Summary of outstanding items from the previous meetings, we do not have any from the previous meeting, so we're down to action items. Eight point one, Superintendent Negro, Social Studies, grade five resource selection, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. You have before you the action item related to the staff report at the last board meeting, recommending the purchase of the many gifts grade five resource, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Trustee La May.
Another question, Madam Chair, I have seen the book, but it's wonderful, and I will move the motion.
Thank you. And seconded by, my most dear, any further questions? The book, all in favor? Thank you. And eight point two, request for recount Burlington Wards one and two. And that is, that is me, so we're on page eleven, please. Go to eleven in your package. I would like to introduce Ms. Angela Morgan, who is the City Clerk for the City of Burlington, who has kindly joined us this evening for any clarification from the, uh, the city's perspective. All right? Thank you. And also, I see we have Mr. O'Brien. Welcome, Mr. O'Brien. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, thank you for coming. So, as outlined on page eleven of your report, we received a letter as indicated regarding Mr. O'Brien's wish to basically appeal for a recount of the vote in Wards one and two. And that letter is attached to your package under information item number twelve point three. The action report listed on page eleven basically outlines the particular issue that Mr. O'Brien is having some concerns with. So before we can discuss this, I would like to put this on the table, and I would like to remind trustees that if you wish to move or second this particular motion, that doesn't mean you have to vote in the affirmative. But for us to discuss this motion, it has to be put on the table. So there is a motion, resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the appeal made by Burlington trustee candidate Tim O'Brien, and submit to the City of Burlington a request for a recount of the votes cast in Wards one and two for the two thousand and fourteen elections. Do I have a mover? I need a mover to put it on the table for this to be discussed at all. A mover and a seconder. Do we have a mover? Last, for one more time, do we have a mover for this particular motion? All right. Thank you very much. I'm afraid that this goes no further, because we do not have a mover to put this on the table, so the matter is closed from this board's perspective. So I thank you for coming. I appreciate the time, and thank you for coming, Ms. Morgan from the city, and thank you for coming, Mr. and Mrs. O'Brien. Moving on, to staff reports, and Superintendent Negro has it again.
Through you, Madam Chair. You have in front of you the staff report relating to the core French grade five resource selection, Eco-Pole. This is on the heels of last year's approval of Eco-Pole one for the grade four. We'd like to move it now for purchase and implementation next year, because we do get a discount on part of the resource before December thirty-first. So it'll be back as an action item if you approve it tonight at the next meeting for purchase. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Negro? Trustee Vienna?
No, I want to move the motion. Is this not, uh, any other question? Trustee Rowe?
What does echo mean? Echoes, yes.
Okay. Sorry, could you have the transcript?
Secondary chemistry textbook selection, Superintendent Negro?
Through you, Madam Chair. Similarly, we're recommending the purchase of this chemistry resource. It follows from the grade eleven textbook that, or a package that we're using in our schools, and this too will come back in a couple of weeks. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, we have questions. We'll see you later.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, if, am I correct in reading it, that this is a resource that schools already have, and we're supplementing what is already there? And if that's so, I'm just wondering why the board is purchasing when, when within the schools? You just purchase replacement texts as they needed them? Thank you.
Superintendent Negro?
Uh, no, we, these, this is to follow on the textbook selection that we've done for the grade eleven course, and this is compliant with the new curriculum that was introduced in science. This is the, uh, the resource that, that matches that. And so this is a package that includes an online resource and licenses, and we piloted the, well, sorry, we're using the grade eleven resource in our schools right now. Okay?
Trustee La May?
Thank you. Um, the, the college prep course, Mr. Negro, is that for students who are neither going into apprenticeship or university, or strictly for those going into colleges?
Uh, it is a college preparation course. It can be used for many different things.
Right.
It's certainly recognized for college preparation, but, but can, can be used in a number of different pathways, not including university, actually.
So it's not for university?
No.
Okay. And the, the hundred copies?
Yes.
If a school finds they need more, then we have the ability to get more?
Well, for this particular resource, we've looked at our numbers in terms of enrollment in grade twelve chemistry courses in the college pathway, and we've purchased, or we're recommending purchase of a hundred, so that we have a number of, of paper copies available for those that need them. So we've targeted that at about ten per school, per class, and, and that, we think, has worked in the past, and that's why we're recommending a hundred.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions on chemistry? No? All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Negro. As information items, ten point one, student trustee update. Student trustee Joel, is it you? Are you the lucky one tonight?
Yes, sorry. Um, okay, um, are we doing, okay, so, the, as you know, at our meeting, two meetings ago, we've decided to report what has been happening in our schools under the three pillars of achieving, believing, and belonging. Um, so, I'm not sure which of the student trustees is achieving, but they usually go first. Is that Chloe? So Chloe will be reporting first.
Okay. So, good evening, Madam Chair, and all trustees. Um, so tonight I'll be reporting under the pillar of achieving. So as we all know, our schools host some of the smartest kids, because, once again, we do have the AP and the IB program, and Halton Catholic is just the best school board. Um, so the last two weeks of October, Jean Vanier, Bishop Reading, and Christ the King all held their academics awards night, so it's basically a night to reward and show off all the students who put work into the academics, who put work into giving back to the school community, and who were just all good, well-rounded students. Um, so the coveted principals award was giving out to students who had the highest average in their class, so these averages ranged from ninety-eight to ninety-six percent. Um, I don't know how they do it, but they did it. Um, and then...
No questions.
And other awards such as student of excellence, or student of the year, were giving out to students who just showed off kind of like the best well-roundedness, participated in sports, had extracurriculars, and did well in school. Um, so this was just basically a night to show off those students, and show them that if you work hard, you will get, you will be shown off, and you'll get recompensated for all your hard work. Um, so, just bringing this all to your attention, we should all be proud of the students that we have and the amazing students that our school hosts, and this should definitely prompt all our trustees to think about giving our teachers a raise, because they are, because they are doing a great job in cultivating the minds of many young leaders that we will soon see on the board. So as of now, this is all that I have to report.
Any other questions? Um, sorry, yeah, we have more.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my report to the evening, my, oh my goodness, my report to the board this evening will highlight examples of believing in our board, um, in the three Catholic elementary schools, secondary schools of Oakville. Um, and these are events which show schools giving back to the community and examples of faith. At Loyola, we recently had our food and clothing drive just before Thanksgiving. Um, we made it a sort of inner-school competition to see who could donate the most friendly competition. Um, so first period classes were teamed up, and we set up a big kind of, um, scale chart thing to see where certain classes were doing in terms of donations. Um, so because of this, the incentive and the competition in our school, we were able to raise a hundred and thirty-four boxes of food, and thousands of extra food and clothing items which were sent to Saint Matthew's Parish for families in need. Um, and they were given to families in need over the Thanksgiving weekend, and we were so glad to help. They were put, all of our proceeds were put in the main hall, and students were passing by, and it was just amazing to see what can happen when students work together for their community. Um, at Holy Trinity, the Free the Children organized a We Scare Hunger event, which is basically when they go door to door collecting cans instead of candy, cans of food. Um, and again, they're donating these to, um, food drives. Uh, they were very successful, and they plan on doing it for years to come as well. Uh, at Saint Thomas Aquinas, the students have been facilitating retreats for their grade nines, in order to develop a greater awareness of the faith connection in their school. Uh, the retreats focus on, at creating an inclusive and accepting culture for STA, um, for their future leaders. The student leadership committees at STA have also received guidance from their chaplain in order to better associate the Catholic faith in their student council, athletic council, and peace and justice clubs. Um, also, STA's peace and justice clubs strive to promote Catholic values within their community as a good steward of their values. Um, as of now, that's all I have to report under the pillar of believing, and I'll hand it off to Jason.
Thank you, Joel. Tonight I'll be speaking to the pillar of belonging, and this is with regards to Notre Dame and assumption, because I know they particularly excel in the area of school spirit. Um, I know we usually define belonging in our school system with academic success, in a sense, and I wanted to point out that in a lot of situations, it's actually not academics, but rather extracurriculars that encourage students to further enhance and support our education within the HCSB. Um, I wanted to, I wanted to bring out a personal, actually, event. A couple of weeks ago, we had, it was just a homecoming game for Notre Dame. It was a football game, the opening of football is really big at Notre Dame. And so they do this thing, they just brought it back two years ago, where they have like the kilt crew come out, those just guys in skirts with no shirts on, and they come up, and they really rev up the crowd and everything. And I, I had a mom sitting next to me, and she was from a different school, so it was from Toronto, a private school, and she didn't turn to me, she turned to her son, and she was just like, "We should have this at our school, this is fantastic." Because, I mean, the crowd was going nuts, the teachers were going nuts, the team was going crazy, pumping up, and, um, I just thought to myself, this is what the HCSB is, this is what Notre Dame is, and this is what...
With your man in skirts.
All our skirts, this is what all our schools are, because there wasn't a person in that crowd that night that didn't feel like they belonged to Notre Dame, whether they were from Notre Dame or the other school, and when you believe in your school, you're far more likely to succeed within it. And I found that that was a perfect example of how, when you are part of extracurriculars, you belong to your school community, and you're more likely to give back and then excel within your high school. Thank you. That's all we have to report for the night.
Questions for Joel and Jason?
I just, I have a comment to the Notre Dame family. Um, a little, little story I'd like, I'd like to tell. A couple of years ago, one of the parish priests from Oakville was, had been invited to Notre Dame in, in Grand Bend, and, um, he, uh, he went down for a pep rally for the Notre Dame, and it was on the Friday night, and of course, I mean, they've got a hundred thousand people in the stadium, and he says, "You couldn't hear yourself think for the noise." But he said, towards the end of the pep rally, there was this huge banner that came out all down one side of the field that said, "God doesn't care who wins this football game, but his mother does." So there you go. Arlene?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a question in regards to your report from last meeting, where you were going to say something about the, um, elementary senate meeting. Did that come off at the end of October?
Yeah. Do our update for the actual senate. Okay, so I'll quickly explain what's going on with the senate. We just, we had our first meeting, we're having our next meeting on November the tenth. We have a couple initiatives that are going on right now. The closest one that we're coming up to is the Give Respect, Get Respect campaign, and we're also trying something new that we talked about called the Prime Ministers of the President's Council, which is when we have all the prime ministers or presidents get together. With the Elementary Student Senate, we're changing the initiative. It's not going to actually continue this year, because of the size of our board is just so big that we couldn't, there was no feasible way to actually structure the meetings for the students to be able to get there, because their parents have to drive them. It's what we want to do, is actually involve them in our initiative by sending our senators from the secondary schools into them, and having meetings maybe once a month before significant initiatives like the Give Respect campaign, and have those students from the smaller, what you could call, an elementary student senate within their school, go and campaign and give out the ideas or leaflets, or explain to the elementary students what our, what our ideas are, so then we get more attendance or participation in stuff like the Give Respect campaign. If you have any questions, we can answer. Yes?
Madam Vice Chair and trustee. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, would there be any way to use technology through Skyping or webinars for the secondary to communicate better with the elementary, so that, I mean, they, maybe they can't leave the school, but perhaps they could sit during the lunch hour and listen to something, or converse with somebody, so that physically you don't have to travel back and forth? Would that be something that's doable?
Uh, we haven't actually listened to that right now. I do know that I was not even allowed to add them on Facebook, so I'm not sure what the legal implications of that would be, but I can look into it. It might be possible. It's a very good idea. Sorry, I just wanted to add that, um, sometimes, I forget even, the elementary students, sometimes their parents aren't allowed to have social networks even, so it, it creates that kind of difficult and inconsistent boundary between us and them. Um, we've tried, we're trying to find different ways to overcome that, as Jason said. Um, but I also wanted to add, um, I had this prepared, but our bullying prevention contest, we actually have our launch this November eighteenth for the contest. Um, we'll be inviting students from across the board to come to Holy Trinity, and they will be learning about the contest, um, how the contest works, um, and kind of trying to be inspired by what the contest is all about, um, and what our goal is, which is to convey the message of anti-bullying, that it's still a prevalent issue in our schools. Um, we're trying to inspire them to spread the message, not only, um, of anti-bullying itself, but of the contest too, so that we get more participants. Um, so we're going to be thinking of them, thinking of some creative ideas with them. Um, and it'll be students from elementary schools and secondary schools, so we'll get all sorts of input.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yeah, just going back to Arlene's comment about the Skype or the webinars, if it's, and I know everybody isn't allowed on social media, um, at a young age, but if it was done in conjunction at school with a teacher in charge or the principal, the Skype should, that kind of thing should work at a lunch hour, or immediately at the end of the school day. So it might be something that, that we should be looking at to, to connect the high school students to the elementaries.
It'll probably be done with parental permission, but you're still going to need parental permission to put a student's face on a screen because of all sorts of issues.
Yeah, but it would need you to...
Yes, it would be. Have it structured. Yes, it would be. Yes, it's a good idea. Superintendent Cepriano, ten point three, procurement activity, no, I'm sorry, educational field trips. No, it's okay, you can stay there, Paul. Educational field trips for Camilla. I need my glasses again, that's all.
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, I present the four approved school educational trips. Uh, one from our elementary schools, uh, and three from our secondary schools. Our secondary schools will be traveling to a music festival in Washington, to a, to New York City to experience a cultural and historical experience, and we have a senior boys hockey team traveling to Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for Superintendent Cepriano? Is this related to this issue, or did I just miss you? This is this issue? Yes? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I, um, thank you, Mr. Cepriano. Well done, because this time I don't have to ask the questions. Every one of them, they say attending mass and emailing the church. Keep her up, good work.
Got them trained, yes.
Thank you, madam.
Okay. Any other questions for Superintendent Cepriano? Okay, I guess you get an A. Okay, thank you. Procurement activities update, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a follow-on report from those listed in the background section. Um, it is a review of our vendor database as indicated, or, or at least speaks to a review of our vendor database as is indicated at the bottom of the first page, page twenty-two in your agenda. Um, and, and our vendor database is actually comprised of three areas. One, through our, the board's financial system. Two, through, uh, school, vendors use for school generated funds, and then three for our corporate purchasing card program, which we will be reviewing all three of those. The subject of this report is on the first one, and we've tried to indicate the competitive bid process, and the, um, the consultants and professional services providers, and single-source providers, and all the appendices, and the activity that's happened since the last report we did, uh, which was in June of two thousand and thirteen. We've also included collaborative, cooperative collaborative spend calculation, which was required by the Ministry of Education, which is in the, the last page of the report, page thirty-one in your agenda, showing that, um, we're about forty-nine percent of our spend, other than salaries and benefits out of our budget, is of a collaborative nature. And in fact, it would be higher, but some of our vendors don't lend themselves to collaborative spend. Certain utilities and other items were basically, um, you know, were, were a price taker on those, and it's a monopoly in certain items. So, um, anyway, we wanted to give the, the board, there was a direction from the Board of Trustees back a few, couple of years ago, as is indicated in the reports, so we wanted to provide an update, um, as to, um, where we've been over the last little while with respect to procurement activities and where we're, where we're going in the future. So, um, myself, Roxanne, or Craig Harling, our purchasing manager, are here to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Very informative report. Uh, trustee La May?
Thank you. Um, Paul, do we have any information, like the, the cost of hydro is, I mean, it's not going to quit anywhere at any two times soon. Do we have any sense of the impact it's going to have on the budget with the hydro keep going up and up and up and up and up? Like, is it something, um, that perhaps the board should be looking at as a resolution for OCSTA to speak to the ministry about this, and at how the impact would be on the education of the students versus the utility company? Like, do we know yet what it's going to be?
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee La May. We do not. We spoke to this in our budget report for the fourteen, fifteen budget, and Jocko may wish to comment further. Um, I certainly would applaud that through OCSTA. I think that is, our utility costs have gone up way more than inflation, and way more than any increases we're seeing in the GSN, so I certainly think it is worthy of, of mention through, and pursuing through OCSTA. Jocko, I don't know if you wanted to comment anymore about... Jacomo, I don't know if you wanted to comment anymore about hydro specifically?
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Lemay. This topic has been discussed many times over and the ministry has given some recognition and given us some additional grants from time to time. As a board, though, we, we strive always to improve our energy efficiency, whether it's hydro, gas, or water consumption. So we're attacking it from a conservation, consumption perspective. Any help we can get from the financial would be very helpful, but it definitely will have some additional pressure on us and the additional cost of hydro, it's not just for our board, for the entire province and economy, it's taking dollars away from the classroom. There's no question about that.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Murray?
Through you, Madam Chair, to superintendent McMahon. Just in regards to, in the report, it references the vendor of record list. Is there, is there a timeline when it's expected to be complete and how, how do you think it will impact the function of procurement with board?
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Murray. The vendor of record list, which particular?
So you reference, it's in the process of, of being created, which, which mentioned insurance levels, qualifications, capabilities, safety requirements?
Which page are you on, Paul?
Page three of that, it's page twenty-four of the entire resource.
Okay.
Three of that specific area.
Bullet three?
Yeah.
Okay. Bullet three, just above the conclusion, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. I, is it the comment at the top of the third page?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. I'll let, uh-
Just in clarification.
Yeah, I'll let Roxanne or Craig go respond to that if you could, please.
Okay. Vendor of record list, when I refer to a vendor of record list, it's a process that we do for commodities contractors, for services that are provided. Pre-qualification happens before we do a vendor of record. The pre-qualification, we go out to the community, the marketplace for the commodity. We have done travel and tour. We've done plumbing. We're looking at working forward to do other contractors such as electricians and tating and this sort of thing. We're working closely with facilities and IT and the different departments to find out what is the most urgent commodity to do. A vendor of record list means we've pre-qualified those vendors and then we look at working with those vendors either through quotations or through requests for tenders to make sure that they can do specific projects or if we're looking at them for just doing maintenance. There's different ways of looking at a vendor of record. But it's not the entire list of vendors. Will never be on a vendor of record list. This is as per commodity or service.
Thank you, madam. I find we have something on page twenty-fifth and page twenty-eight. At a high school level, we have any students a class to learn plumbing? We teach plumbing at high school level? And I believe we have gardening. We teach in gardening, right?
Yes.
Okay. It's a good example. It's, we have here field maintenance repair. We could have that students to be training, uh, to do that. At the same time, help us and give them experience. Jacomo?
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Vienna. It is possible to have students do some of the work, but because of the equipment and the training and basically they're really large scales, heavy equipment we're using, like they're using long, large mowers and whatnot, and most of the bulk of that work is done in the summertime. In the late, in the spring and the fall, there may not be as much. And the scheduling is such, it may not fit in with the class, but if there's a program where we can get some, through a know-it-all program or summer type program, we could connect with one of our contractors that do the landscaping, maintenance for us and see how that could work in that fashion. Provide some sort of co-op opportunity or some on-the-job training type of thing.
Thank you. I would appreciate if we can go through that revenue because on second tier and see a newspaper advertisement, we need people, plumbers, ten years' experience, twenty years' experience, eight years' experience. Then if our own students can do some hours at our level, that will keep his, his experience high for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, thank you. Absolutely. Any other questions at all? Madam Vice Chair? Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just a quick one, I guess, to Superintendent McMahon. Our architects, I see that's up for review. Has that, has that happened yet, the RFP, or is that yet to happen this year?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Vice Chair. It's yet to happen. And that is another example in response to trustee Murray's question of a, of a pre-selection process where we have four or five architects as vendors of record, if you will. But Craig, I don't know, when is the date for that?
We plan on doing that this fall or early next year when we get the resources together with trying to pull together superintendents and different people to sit on the committee, on the evaluation committee.
There's a lot of work in that report. Uh, thank you. Ten point four, monitoring report achieving responsive to needs of all students, superintendents Negro and Brown.
Through you, Madam Chair, and on behalf of Superintendent Brown, I present to you the outcome monitoring report entitled, Meeting the Needs and Aspirations of All Learners. This is the second of six monitoring reports we are issuing this year. This particular report looks at specific groups of students and gaps, as well as enrollment and achievement figures in specialized programs, some of the strategies that we are using to address individual needs and some of the programs to address those needs as well. I would draw your attention to the back page to give you an idea of, and this is a sample of the strategies and programs that we have in place to address the needs of all learners. And there are a number of superintendents that contributed to this report. We are all available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions to our program superintendents on this issue? No? All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I have Association of School Business Officials International Annual Conference, Superintendent McMahon. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned in the conclusion, it was a privilege to represent the board at this conference. It not only allowed me to represent the board, but also as the vice president of our Ontario Association of School Business Officials and as part of our newly-founded Canadian School Business Officials Association, which is an affiliate, which through the provincial affiliates is part of ASGO International. And I assure the board that attending events like this does help put our board on the map and I'd be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent McMahon. Any questions on that issue? All right. Thank you. Ten point six, trustee Rowe, you would like to talk about curriculum program?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I haven't noticed recently in the paper that in regards to provincial sex education updates or programs, that a questionnaire was going to be devised for parent councils to, to fill in. And I thought to myself, what do most parent councils know about the curriculum that we already have, approved by the council bishops that we've been teaching for, for decades? And one of the contentious issues, I understand, coming out of this provincial sex education update, is the timing of when they want to teach certain topics. And so I thought it would be an excellent resource for these parents if a simple list of all the topics that are taught at which grade level, as they currently exist in our Family Life program, was prepared and distributed to each parent council so that they have some understanding of what is already in place when they go to fill in this provincial questionnaire, which may or may not be used to determine provincial legislation.
Madam Director, we'd like to respond to that.
I will ask Superintendent Negro just to respond about the timelines and exactly what is being asked of our parent councils.
Through you, Madam Chair. The consultation process involves communicating via principal to our, our school council, our Catholic school councils. So we will be communicating with them tomorrow morning, requesting that they name a parent volunteer from the Catholic school council to participate in the survey. An independent marketing firm has been hired by the ministry to do this consultation. It's an online questionnaire. We have actually the draft, or we have the questionnaire and frequently asked questions handout and Director Dawson will be sending you that in a moment. So next week, on November 12th, our principals will be receiving an email from this consulting firm that will provide a single link to be used one time. The principal will forward this link on to the parent representative. The parent representative will fill out the survey. It includes about ten questions and, and to be completed in about twenty minutes. Most of the questions really don't involve any required knowledge of the curriculum and when, the order of these topics as they appear in the curriculum. It's mostly opinions that they might have, but again, this is information that's available on the ministry website. If you Google educate, Ministry of Education, Ontario Memos, it is the memo, the last memo in October and it has all of the information, including the memo to directors, the FAQ and the survey itself. Sorry? Yes, and that's being sent right now by the director. So this is the format that the survey will take, that is, is being used for the survey. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
When I read the, the articles on it, I thought that there was going to be someplace where they weren't just going to ask the, the parents, but that boards could respond or trustees could respond or, and I'm wondering if Arlene knows if OCSTA is going to respond. Like, I don't think it should be left up to a single parent from each school in Ontario. Like, I think that there should be more input, like, is Walton Catholic going to send in a response or does it affect our religious rights as a Catholic board? Like, you know, like, there's so many questions that, that they don't seem to have any answers to or direction.
So beyond, I, I did leave out one group, that is our CPIC, that will also be involved in the survey. So there is one other layer of parental representation, but it was really billed as a parent survey by the ministry. I, I have not heard of any other survey that will go to boards at the present time. So that's all the information we have on that.
Okay, so if, if the boards of Ontario wanted to even comment on the whole process?
Through you, Madam Chair. Boards in Ontario are always welcome to comment directly to the minister. Any topic.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think what trustee Rowe was asking was a list of by grade, what, what the topics are in our religious and family life, or Family Life program so that we send that out to our school council chairs so they're aware of what we currently teach in the Family Life program, even though the survey doesn't really say anything about what the topics are in the new Health and Society Curriculum.
And, and that's a, an important distinction, that we teach our sexuality through the Family Life program, not so much through the Health and Society Program.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I would, I just think it's a good, a little bit of background knowledge for the parents rather than coming into it cold because, you know, maybe they're on parent council and they have a child in grade one, so they really haven't had much experience with, with the Family Life program. And, and so it just gives them a little background, background knowledge and, and perhaps maybe trustees could get a copy of it, too.
Certainly, we can work on that and, and we'll need to prepare that in the next couple of days for inclusion with the package that goes out next week.
Sort of as a comment, I know that OCSTA is keeping an eye on what's going on, so I'm sure that if and when it looks like the ministry is going to roll something out, that OCSTA, I believe that most steps now are being consulted, you know, as, as to what's coming forward and they're constantly in contact with the government and the ministry. So I would, I'd be fairly certain that they will have a voice and certainly at the AGM, this could very well come forward as well.
Through you, Madam Chair. Any curriculum review includes participation of a number of stakeholders within it over time, so again, I'm sure that OCSTA and other organizations are involved in that particular process.
Thank you very much. Regarding our next item, that is correspondence, twelve point one. You have the board's response to the, the school council from Assumption Catholic Secondary School. That is the board's response there. Any questions to that? Seeing none. Twelve point two, the French immersion programs. That's a parent's email from Oakville Schools, went to the Oakville trustees, so it's there for everyone's attention. Madam Vice, Madam, I'm sorry, Madam Director? That's you?
Yes.
Would you like to respond to that?
I believe that when the email circulated, trustee Danko said, "Maybe we could discuss this." And I'd be happy to prepare a report to come back to address some of the questions here if that would be the will of the board.
Twelve point three, letter re-request for recount Burlington wards one and two. Mr. O'Brien will be sent a letter indicating formally the response of the board to that. I don't believe we have any open questions, Helen? No, no open questions? We do not have to return to in camera. We have no absentees, so we need a motion for adjournment. Trustee Vienna, and seconded by trustee Morrison, and we are going to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you. And trustee Lemay is going to lead us in prayer. Thank you.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Oh, Holy Spirit, most merciful Comforter, you proceed from the Father in a manner beyond our understanding. Come, we beseech you, and take up your abode in our hearts. Purify and cleanse us from all sin and sanctify our souls. Cleanse it from every impurity, water its dryness, melt its coldness, and save it from its sinful ways. Make us truly humble and resigned, that we may be pleasing to you and that you might abide with us-
Oh, Holy Spirit, most merciful Comforter, you proceed from the Father in a manner beyond our understanding. Come, we beseech you, and take up your abode in our hearts. Purify and cleanse us from all sin and sanctify our souls. Cleanse it from every impurity, water its dryness, melt its coldness, and save it from its sinful ways. Make us truly humble and resigned, that we may be pleasing to you and that you might abide with us forever. Most blessed light, most amiable light, enlighten us. Oh, rapturous joy of paradise, fountain of purest light, my God, give yourself to us and kindle in our innermost soul the fire of your love. My Lord, instruct, direct, and defend us in all things. Give us strength against all immoderate fears and against despondency. Bestow upon us a true faith, a firm hope, and a sincere and perfect light. Grant that we always do your most gracious will. Amen. St. Thomas Aquinas.
Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.